So we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Budge?
Here.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Here.
Councilmember McGarvey?
Here.
Councilmember Sander, absent. Mayor Terry?
Here. Item two. Clerk, will you please read the television announcement?
This meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council is being videotaped with closed captioning in its entirety and will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse. Today's meeting will be repeated Wednesday, August 23 at 6:00 p.m. and Sunday, August 27 at noon on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch. A copy can be ordered from the city clerk's department and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to item 3.0, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. Today, we will have the pledge led by Stacy Leitner, who we're going to introduce later for about something else really cool. And then I'd ask the audience to remain standing and we'll -- for our invocation, which will be done by Julie Steinbeck from the United Methodist Church of Rancho Cordova.
..........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
That will move on to presentations and item 5.1, city manager is going to introduce our new city clerk.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, members of the community. I am delighted tonight to introduce Stacy Leitner as our newly appointed city clerk for the city of Rancho Cordova. And if I could ask Stacy to please join me here at the podium. Stacy has been employed with the city of Rancho Cordova as the executive assistant to the city manager since June of 2004. She will continue serving as the assistant to the city manager as well as serving as the city's new city clerk as the vacancy was created when our city clerk moved on to -- and was appointed as the city clerk in the city of Sacramento. Stacy's executive skill set and previous experience, she also served as the interim city clerk for a amount of time in the early years of the cityhood, would really provide for a seamless transition in this new role. She, in addition to the responsibilities that she has, that she has assumed, she currently serves on the Executive Board of Directors for the International Association of Administrative Professionals. And she's also a joint faculty member for the BYU University teaching online classes. So she's definitely, and as somebody who has worked very closely with Stacy, I can vouch that she's definitely a pleasure to work with and quite a joy to have as our new city clerk. So I'm very delighted to introduce Stacy. Anything, Stacy, that you would like to add tonight?
I'm just super excited to continue working with the city of Rancho Cordova and to continue working with each of you and with members of our community. And I look forward to a new journey.
With that, please join me currently relating Stacy on her new role at the city, as the city clerk. So later tonight, just a few, just a note, later tonight on the agenda, we have an item where she would be formally and officially sworn in as the city clerk. So I want to take this opportunity to thank Nancy Lima for being our interim city clerk while we were going through the recruitment process. She will serve as the city clerk for the duration of this meeting. And at the end, we will pass the baton to Stacy during the formal ceremony and the swearing in. So thank you, Nancy, and thank you for the service you have given to the city as well.
Thank you and congratulations, Stacy. So next, we'll move on to public comment. So citizens wishing to address the council for any matter on the consent calendar or not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk, who's to my right over here. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called up to the podium by the mayor at the time on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep comments to three minutes or less and state the name and community of residence. Under the provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or that a need to take action arose after the posting of the agenda. Do we have any public comment cards?
Yes, sir. Carol Limbog, Joy Moon, and Diane Rogers.
I'm Carol Limboga, resident since '88, and I'm here to finish what I started last meeting. We need to acknowledge our bum problem and find a solution. To refresh your memory, we do not have a homeless problem. Everyone is doing their job. There is a solution for the folks who really want four walls, a bathroom, and utilities. I am representing residents who have lived for many, many years north of the railroad tracks. They have talked at various meetings to certain staff members and our three navigators. I personally have been hearing their comments and concerns for six years. Do you know where our bums live? We do. They live behind our businesses like Carquest, Autozone, El Conti Way, 99 Cent Store, and in the northeast bushes of our Mather 50 entrance. They get up really early, they go to our store or businesses, they buy something, and now they have the right to use their bathrooms. Do these businesses want trouble like vandalism? Heck, no. What about their customer base seeing this? You wonder why businesses do not want to locate on Folsom Boulevard? Evening time, we see them pushing their carts back toward businesses, bushes, parks, and schools. They use one of our school's water fountains in the back to wash clothes in the summer. They hang out here and there and have nothing to do. We who live here on the north side of the tracks see this every day. You are fortunate that many Rancho Cordova churches are given money so they can put them up for the night in cold weather. Folks, for the love of God, donate their time so you don't have the news reporting that someone froze to death on our streets. Now, you do not need a $250,000 fact-finding committee. The police, fire, and navigator all know them by their first names. Grumbling among ourselves, even complaining to the police and navigator, isn't getting us anywhere. We need a committee consisting of residents, police, fire, navigator, businesses, chamber of commerce, and benefactors to acknowledge this problem and come up with solutions. Or we need a workshop or a future agenda item for a future council meeting. Now, if you don't get what I'm talking about, let's dream. Zack County, all of a sudden, got a ton of money, built a million homes, apartments, whatever, sure does their job, doing their credit checks, prison records, and everything, and place everyone who qualifies. Who's left? The bums, the mental, the VA who didn't really qualify, let's say, the criminals, and those who do not want four walls. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmen and women, and congratulations for -- to Stacy. And I'm so glad to be here. And I'm not prepared, but somehow I want to start with, I would like to give this Bible verse, "But thanks be to God which giveth us the victory through our Lord Jesus Christ." I would like this, I pray for Mr. President of the United States and his leading, and also specifically, I would like to pray for the North Korean situation that -- my origin is Korea. I was born in South Korea, and early in my childhood, I would, there was a chapel between the Eighth Army United States Military Headquarters and then Republic of Korea Headquarters, there was a church. And every Sunday, President of Korea came and worshipped God with every one of us. And he graduated Princeton, Harvard, and Georgetown in five years, and he was a judicial doctor. Because of him that I developed an affinity to American president. So my first American president is President Eisenhower, and I was able to see every one of them in person. And specifically, I would like to send a letter to President of North Korea. And I know, I understand that Korea is such a beautiful country, has a lot of resources. So probably, they had an attack about 995 times. However, no matter what situation is, that please, with the money that spends for, can be spent for missiles, please nourish public for children, dying children, and support public health. And I hope that love of Jesus touch your heart and be a peacemaker of this whole world. Because his great-great-grandmother was a Christian, I think, I believe he's, she was a Presbyterian. So I apologize for this unprepared speech, but my prayer, my prayers will be all the time for the safety, health and safety and weather, good weather. Have a great evening and God bless everybody.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Please call the next speaker.
It's all right, I'm going to make this a little more comfortable. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I come before you to express the chamber's thanks and deep appreciation for the support and professional services we received from your city's facilities team on behalf of our Seventh Business Expo. I wanted to let you know that we had over nearly 90 booths, we had a bunch of food vendors, and we welcomed over 680 guests to share and learn about the businesses that we have in Rancho Cordova. But we could not have done it without the incredible support of your own facility staff. So I just wanted to come before you today to let you know that they were on site by 6:00 a.m. They worked all day, took down tents, tables, and chairs, and then flipped the room for an event that fell immediately after the next day. I'd specifically like to mention the good work of Shawna Morgan, Ian Snyder, Linus Kohler, Darius Miller, Jeff Beckstiger, Dennis Lentz, Tina Walker, Tim Watson, and Todd Humphrey. So on behalf of the chamber, our members, our vendors, and guests, we just simply wanted to say thank you and share our appreciation for the marvelous staff that was so helpful that day. Anyway, thank you.
Diane, thank you for doing that, seriously. And to name them by name, I think means a lot. I know to, not just us hearing it and getting to repeat it, but I'm sure to the people that don't get mentioned as often as they should for the hard work that they do. So, thank you.
You're very kind. And I'll be sending a note to Todd asking them to do that. But they are extraordinary, and they always step up and do above and beyond. And there's no chamber in the region that I know of that has that kind of support. And it's important that they are acknowledged and said thank you.
Yeah. We appreciate you coming here to say it.
Okay, thanks.
So with that, do we have any other speaker cards?
No.
Okay. So with that, we'll move on to council reports. Councilmember Gatewood?
So, mic on. So besides seeing a great showing from the Rancho Chamber, all the businesses there and all the lumpia that was served, don't know who did that, but that was amazing. 500 lumpy in 15 minutes. I think they're planning on it. I want to talk a little bit about Measure A. I got put on the STA board, so I figured everyone should know. This is how we fund the, if you guys have seen it, the Folsom Boulevard project, the cleaning up, how amazing it looks, was the city actually getting the money from this grant. And so I went there and sat in, and they explained to me how an $8 billion fund can, over time, miraculously turn into a $2.5 billion fund. And I was like, well, I mean, does Rancho get its money? And they said, as long as we spend our money, in the next two years, we get to keep it. And if not, they're going to reassociate. So I talked with Cyrus, and we should be able to get the rest of the money that's owed to us to keep our roads looking nice. And then I started calling around to other people that have their projects down the way and saying, you guys should really jump on top of this because it looks like there's going to be no money left in the kitty if the money keeps depreciating $2.4 billion after every year. That was about it.
Thank you. Pop?
Well, I'll have to wait till next city council meeting to give some more new reports on the committees that I'm on. But I wanted to say I enjoyed the eclipse today with about, I'm not sure how many other millions of people. I think it was one of the nicest things, that it gave everybody a chance to see something different and watch something different than the petty stuff that's on the news all the time. So you actually can see something that's better than you and me, and that was enjoyable. I know our kids at school, at the Riverview Elementary, or excuse me, the Riverview STEM Academy, had the glasses that were made for them to watch the sun and everything. It was just one of those things that you don't, definitely don't have a chance to do very often. But again, it was nice to have the people, millions of people in the country, just put aside all of the other things that we watch all the time. Something else that was in the news that I'm paying attention to, it's, all you can do is wait and see, but the, there are Sacramento counties and other counties and cities and 57 organizations who are trying to stop the twin tunnels that the governor wants to put in to take so much water out of the Sacramento River. So we'll see, have to watch those go, but it's going to make a difference to everyone, I think. So that's something to pay attention to now that the sun's going to stay up all the time now. So, thank you.
So, yeah, so like Bob, we definitely paid a lot of attention to the eclipse this morning and came away with some really cool pictures. I suspect our photographers in the audience got even better pictures, but following the NASA TV suggestions, we got interesting photos taken when you use a box as a projector, and when you photograph shade, and all the little shade comes out to be little crescent moon shapes. And even the colander, this is the suggestion of the guy from NASA, anything with a hole in it. So you turn the colander over, and you've got all these, this pattern of little crescent moon shapes everywhere. Just hilarious. And we really want to congratulate Stacy. She's, she's a, she's very much an asset, and we're pleased to be able to offer her this advancement opportunity. Like a lot of us here, I enjoyed being at Folsom Lake College to celebrate this first class that's coming in on the Promise program. Enjoyed hearing Dr. Almi Barra speak to Cordova Community Council on Friday, and thoroughly enjoyed the business expo. Lots of things to do and see, and so Diane, you said 680, is that the number of hot dogs that the NCOA served, everybody?
Theirs were just over 500.
They served over 500 hot dogs. They cooked hot dogs all day long. It was terrific. At our SMUD two-by-two, we talked about a variety of things such as electrification, what it means to have more electric charging stations around. At Regional Transit, David and I attended the Joint Powers Authority for the rail corridor up in Folsom and Eldorado Hills. This is owned jointly by Regional Transit and Folsom and Eldorado County and Sacramento County, and it's where they're trying to put excursion rail. So the excursion rail has been very successful, and they're trying to maintain it and to expand it. Also enjoyed the concerts in the park, and if you haven't been, you need to show up at Village Green Park at 7:00 on Friday nights for another three weekends. Looking forward to the fundraiser Rotary Poker Night on Saturday. And no, I don't play poker, but I know other people who do. And then I appreciate our lady from the Methodist Church mentioning Jared Tucker. His mother-in-law, Linda Nunes, is one of the founding members of our artist association. And she's a neighbor of mine, and so I would ask that we adjourn tonight in Jared Tucker's memory.
Thank you, Linda. So a couple other things that weren't mentioned, and some that were, but did get a chance to go to see Congressman Barra speak here at City Hall. And then shortly after that, I, Cyrus, Kurt, and a handful of other regional leaders, some county supervisors and other folks toured the Aerojet property with senior staff from Aerojet to really look at what kind of opportunities the closure is going to provide to the community. And so Barry Broome from G-SAC and some other folks were there. And while obviously, people losing their jobs is something we don't want to see, it's a very sad day for our community and for our city, the economic potential of what's there is really enormous. The thing that people just kept talking about was, you'd never be able to build something like this in California today. That the stuff that's there, what they were doing, the facilities that are in existence that will be able to repurpose, you would never be able to construct even new today. So the opportunity to bring manufacturing or other types of uses into this region really was, would never have happened without this type of event happening. And so just driving around in a bus with some folks and just getting an idea of the scale of it. So I've toured the plant. I have, I've never toured the grounds, and I know, Linda, you're probably more familiar than anyone in this room with what we saw, but just the scale of what they did and how they had to spread things out so far from each other so that if one thing blew up, it wouldn't blow anything else up, is the best way I can describe it, with bunkers and, but you had to, you had to separate so many things. So the scale at which they're doing, and if you go over there and you ever look at that map of each of those little buildings, they had to put them a half mile away from each other just for safety reasons. And so what we have here to capitalize on as a region is really a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, is what we do with the county and with the city and with Aerojet over the next handful of years to repurpose that is really going to be something amazing, I think. So really enjoyed that. I think the conversations that we had with SMUD were very productive. I, along with everyone, Bob, I don't think you were able to come to the Promise launch. So we had our first 148 students start, or they had their orientation night at our Rancho Cordova Center for Folsom Lake College. About 100 of them actually showed up, which was really great, and we got to welcome the new president of Folsom Lake College at his first official community event to be introduced as the president was at that event. But it was just a really inspiring night to look at so many of those students that were there that took advantage of the program and were able to, you know, not only tell them, yeah, this is great, you know, and we've recommitted to doing it next year, so we know it's not going anywhere, at least for a while, but to really talk to those students and say, you know, this community cares enough about you and about your future to spend this kind of money and to give you a leg up and to get you started in college, but that we also expect a lot out of them, that from this investment, they need to, they need to know that they owe something back to their community because their community invested in them in a way that no one else can do. And the thing that was interesting, because I was sharing this at the congressman's town hall, I moderated a town hall on Saturday with Congressman Barra, and I was sharing this, but the one thing that kind of dawned on me that I had never really said out loud, but I'm pretty sure this is true, there are a lot of promise programs in the country. There's only one that's full, One and now West SAC, that are fully funded by a city. And we were, as far as I know, the first city to ever go in and say, our city, we're going to do this, and we're paying for all of it. And so that's a real testament to the folks that are up here about where we want to make our priorities and where we want to make a difference. And so that was a really inspiring night for me. Another really fun night, and I can't remember if we've had a council meeting since then, but I'm pretty sure we haven't, was I got to be a judge for the Moose Lodge rib contest. And while, Linda, thank you for speaking on our behalf, because I had to leave straight from there to go to a fundraiser that I committed to in the Stockton area, and so I had to leave, but what a delicious way to volunteer for an event. And it was great. There were some really good ribs. There were some okay ribs, but most of them were really good. So that was a lot of fun. And then you brought up, Linda, and I just wanted to clarify, you said that Rotary's having a poker night this weekend?
Yeah.
Because I know community council announced that they were doing. Is that, are they all part of it?
It's the Rotary, it's the Rotary Poker Night, but it, there are three beneficiaries of the fundraising.
Got it, okay. So I didn't follow that.
And we've got tickets?
I don't yet. I'm planning on trying to do double duty because I also sponsored the Whisker Warrior Dinner is this Saturday.
It is exactly the same night. You're right, we should acknowledge that.
So, yeah, it's 5:30 here for poker, so if I lose early, I can still get chicken at Whisker Warriors.
At Whisker Warriors.
But I just wanted to point out that that's also going on.
And that'll be at the Moose Lodge, and they can also get tickets online.
There you go. So, those are just the plugs. I wasn't sure if we were talking about the same poker night, but there was also the conflict too, because I know they were, they were selling two-for-one tickets to the poker on Friday, and I didn't buy them yet because I'm not sure which one I'm going to be able to go to. And of course, we'll adjourn in the memory of Jared Tucker. That was a very sad thing to learn about, you know, between London and other places, but I've been to Barcelona twice in my life, once shortly after I met my wife, and then we spent our honeymoon there too. And so what a wonderful city, and to think if anyone tried to drive a car down the La Rambla fast, what kind of damage that could do, because that's basically an outdoor park that is always packed like that. So it was very, very sad. So with that, we will move on to our city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple quick comments. I had an opportunity to meet James Corliss, who's the new executive director for SECOC. And we talked a little bit about a new process that SECOC is undertaking called the Civic Lab. And the idea is to initiate a process, a regional process, where leaders from around the region could get together and talk about challenges and issues that faces our region and explore and find ways to, innovative ways to deal with those issues. So last week, there was a meeting that launched the program, and Councilmember Sander, who serves on SECOC board, and several people from our Public Works Department were able to attend the work session. I received a very good, positive feedback on this, and I'm hopeful that some, something specifically related to transportation and transit, hopefully some innovative ways could be explored to not only reduce the cost, but also to address some of our bigger regional problems. The only other thing I just wanted to point out that I did, as Mayor mentioned, I did accompany Congressman Barra and Mayor Terry to the tour of Aerojet. And I have to attest that this is an incredible opportunity for the region. They're, you know, as sad as it is that they are leaving, but I think this also opens the door for many great, many great opportunities for industrial and commercial growth that we all could benefit from. That's all I have.
Thank you. And welcome back from six days in the wilderness.
Yeah. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Twenty miles of hiking.
First of all, I really would like to thank you, the council, for giving me the opportunity to participate. This is part of the American Leadership Forum. As part of the program, we get to actually go hike in the wilderness with a group of regional leaders. And what a, what a great way to, not only to get to leaders. And what a great way to, not only to get to know people, but also participate in some really uplifting and deep discussions that not only helps to build the character, but also creates a great team environment. So through this process, I've been able to meet many of our regional leaders, and I hope to continue working with them on bringing new ideas and new thoughts to the city. Thank you.
And just to point out, if you're looking for the next eclipse, it's going to be between Texas and Maine, April 8th of 2024. If you can't wait that long, you can go to Chile and Argentina on December 14th, 2020. So you can write those down. You don't have to drive to Idaho. So with that, we'll move on to the consent calendar. So consent calendar items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff, unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration. All items will be approved by one motion. At this time, actually, staff is requesting that we pull item 9.9. Am I correct? Okay. Is there anything else that needs to be pulled besides item 9.9?
Can we pull 9.6?
Okay. Hearing nothing else, then, I will move approval of items 9.1 through 9.10, with the exception of 9.6 and 9.9.
Do you have a second? Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Aye.
Councilmember McGarvey?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to item 9.6. Who's bird dogging it? Okay, there we go.
We should ask Nancy to read it into the record.
Would you please?
Item 9.6, Resolution Number 112-2017, authorizing the city manager to execute Contract Amendment Number 150-2015-1 with R3 Consulting Group Incorporated for on-call solid waste consulting services to extend the term through November 30, 2019, and increase the contract budget from $170,000 to $430,000.
Did you have a specific question?
Yeah, I just wanted to know. We went over a little bit, but you were going to come back and just explain why we went up by $300,000. Everyone should know, too, that this is my mom's student that she taught all through high school.
Couple of years. The client or Mr. Harriman over here?
Mr. Harriman. She only had to flunk him once, but he made it through on the second time.
This is the same lady that's helping teach my kid math after school sometimes, I hear.
And for the record, we think Mr. Harriman has some of the best syntax on staff.
Who left first, him or her?
She was fantastic, by the way. We had a great relationship. Thank you, Mayor Terry. Members of the council, for the record, I'm Steve Harriman with the Department of Public Works. So we have an on-call consulting contract with R3 Consulting Group to assist us with our solid waste programs. And so they basically assist us with the administration of our residential and commercial solid waste contracts. We have a number of grants, excuse me, that we administer. We have reporting requirements. So this amendment extends that on-call consulting contract for two years. And then also with our contract with Republic Services on our residential franchise, they either provide us with a recycling coordinator, physically a staff person, or they pay us $50,000 per year. We have made the decision to use R3 basically for our in-house city recycling coordinator, because we're going to be doing some additional work with our commercial sector. And I think it's a little bit easier not to have a Republic employee do that. So the additional scope of work is actually being funded by Republic Services, if that makes sense. And I apologize, that wasn't more clear in the staff report.
That makes sense. Okay. I wanted to know why we went up by 300,000. So as long as it's funded by someone else.
Great. Thank you.
Questions, then I will move approval of 9.6.
I have a motion. Do you have a second? I have a second. Motion by Budge, a second by McGarvey. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Aye.
Councilmember McGarvey?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. So we're pulling, pulling 9.9, so we don't need to do that?
Oh, just pulling 9.9.
Yeah, just.
Are we pulling for discussion or pulling?
No, the staff request that this item to be continued to a future meeting. There's some additional details that need to be worked out, and Ms. Blanchard wanted to have an opportunity to discuss some of those items with the city staff. So she's not here tonight, and we would like to request that the item to be continued.
Should we continue it to a date certain?
September 18th.
Okay, then I will move we continue item 9.9 to the 19th of September, 18th of September.
18th. I have a motion by Budge. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by McGarvey. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood? Councilmember McGarvey?
Aye.
Vice Mayor?
Budge? Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Okay. So with that, we'll move on to the Consent Public Hearing. Consent Public Hearing items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff, unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration. All items will be approved by one motion. And I have a note here that this item was noticed for a public hearing on August 21st. However, it will be tabled and heard as a regular agenda item on September 5th. So.
Do we need a motion to continue it to the 5th?
Are we going to table the whole thing?
We are asking you to table it until September the 5th. We do not need a motion. It was agendized as tabling it.
Oh. We agendized it as tabling it? Why didn't we put it on the agenda?
It had already been noticed, sir.
The public hearing notice had already gone out.
That's the way it is in the agenda.
Okay. So we don't need a motion?
No, sir.
Okay, got it. Okay, and we'll move on to public hearing items. And our first public hearing is 11.1, Superior Self-Storage Major Design Review Permit and Parking Adjustment. And we've got June.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. June Cowell, Senior Planner. It's not coming. Well, if you can just hit the button. There it goes. Who's doing it? Oh, thank you, Nancy. The applicant is proposing to construct four one-story self-storage buildings totaling 112,428 square feet. And the proposal also includes a two-story caretaker apartment and office with supporting parking, lighting, and landscaping. The titlements required for this project is a major design review permit and adjustment. They are requesting for a parking adjustment of 22%. So to give you some where this site is located, it's within the northeast corner of Sunrise Boulevard and Mechanical Drive. So it's in between Sunrise Boulevard and Lu Young And the zoning map is within the light industrial and heavy industrial zoning. The general plan is within the Sunrise Boulevard South planning area. As you can see, it's surrounded by M1 and M2 zoning districts. And so the existing conditions here is that at the top, the view of Sunrise Boulevard and a view from Lu Young Drive at the site. You can see that the infrastructure is already in there with curb gutter and sidewalk. And the proposed site plan, this is a 4.99 acre site. The main building, which is A, is basically the public building. This is a conditioned storage space, and buildings B, C, and D are traditional roll-up door storage. The building type and square footage is listed on Page 5 of your staff report. And within the site, there is no outdoor And to give you an aerial perspective on how the project fits into the surrounding area, you can see Building A is right up against Sunset, or Sunrise Boulevard, and Buildings B, C, and D are behind existing buildings. And near to the north is an existing building as well. So there's a driveway, a shared driveway off of Sunrise Boulevard for ride-in, ride-out. And so that's how the main public will come in. This will be gated and fenced, so the secure area will be within the Buildings B, C, and D area, a little bit to the north of Building A. And then also, there's a driveway on Lu Young
Can you go back really quick? I just have one quick question. The entrance on Lu Young, is that just a fire escape, or is that going to be the main entrance on Sunrise? I'm sorry if I missed that.
The main entrance will be on Sunrise Boulevard.
Well, is the back, is that one on Lu Young going to just be a fire escape?
No, that will be gated, so that will be for the customers that have storage within the project.
Is that traditional, have two entrances like that into a facility like this?
Well, both will be secure. So the gate is off of Building A's. You can see where the parking spaces are for the main public, and then access into the site and also Lu Young Drive. So if you have a RV, you can access it from Lu Young with a secured gate code and also from Sunrise Boulevard.
But there is a question.
I was wondering how much traffic that makes in an area that's supposed to not have a bunch of traffic.
There's no gate shown on Lu Young. It's missing. Don't you intend there to be a gate on Lu Young?
Yeah, if you look at Sunrise, right there, you have a gate.
Yeah.
Over here, you don't. So it's just something missing, I think, in the drawing, because if you're going to have a gate there, then you should show one.
Yes, in the staff report, we did state and talk with the applicant, there is going to be a gate there. Fire will have access.
I think the diagram in the packet shows it better, because it does show swing and the setbacks that you would need for it. I just, I can't think of another facility like that that's got too interest into it like that.
Well, we don't normally have a piece of property that runs between two streets. That's the deal. It's just a very oddball-shaped piece of property.
And the caretaker apartment is adjacent to Lu Young Drive.
Oh, it's in the back?
Yes.
Oh, it's that right there. I can see it now. Okay.
Yeah, where it says apartment.
Isn't that usually in the front? Okay. All right, that was all my questions for now.
So on the architectural elevations, so the Building A is going to be facing Sunrise Boulevard, and they use a split face CMU with different tones of brown, glass for the front area and to make it look more like an office. And the canopy is horizontal, coming out towards the building. Now, off to the left side, it stepped back. So if you looked at the site planning, just so it would follow the size or the shape of the property, it stepped back from the building area where the entrance is at. And then we have the Building A southeast elevation that's facing towards an undeveloped lot, a mechanical drive. And those will include trellis with also some vines on every other trellis. And the next one. And so this is Building A northwest elevation. This is facing towards the interior of the project. And so this is the conditioned space, but it will also have roll-up doors. So that's facing towards the interior of the project. It is not visible from Sunrise Boulevard. And also facing Lu Young Drive, you can see on Building D, the apartments, the two-story apartment, and B and C. Along Lu Young Drive, there'll be some landscaping and with a steel tubular fence. And this is also facing towards the interior for B and D. And the picture on the bottom is Building D. This is facing the north elevation, and that is going to be against the existing building to the north. Buildings C and D, these are both interior. And you can see on the bottom elevation, the apartment, it has a two-car garage on the lower side, or the lower portion of the building for the caretaker. And here's the landscape planning. They are going to be having landscaping along Sunrise Boulevard and within the parking area, and also along Lu Young Drive and in between the Buildings A and B. The adjustment for the parking, the zoning code requirement for parking is one space per 2,000 square feet. So it's a required 54 parking spaces. 42 are provided. Some of that parking is within the parallel to the roll-up door, Buildings B, C, and D. Requested adjustment is 12 parking spaces, and that's 22%. The zoning code allows 30% maximum. So staff looked at a project parking comparison. In the city of Folsom, they are building a superior storage on Folsom Boulevard currently, and you can see the comparison of the building's square footage. 25 parking spaces are provided. So for the requested parking adjustment, it would be one space per 2,600 square feet. The project is exempt from CEQA on Section 15183, projects consistent with the community plan, general plan, or zoning. And staff recommends approval of the resolution approving the Superior Self-Storage CEQA exemption, major design review and adjustment. This would allow the applicant to submit necessary construction permits to build the self-storage buildings. And as stated, the proposal includes the two-story caretaker apartment and office with supporting parking, lighting, and landscaping. And the applicant is here if you have any questions as well.
Okay. So with that, we are doing a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any public comment cards on this item?
No, sir.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
Good evening, councilmembers and citizens.
Oh, actually, okay. So are you the applicant?
Go applicant, yes.
Okay. So we have a presentation from the applicant as well?
He was just.
I'm just here to answer any questions.
Okay. Yeah, we'll let you know if we have some. So any questions for staff at this time?
No questions for the applicant.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
He'll close the public hearing.
Okay. So with that, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
Okay. I will move that we find that the environmental documentation is adequate and appropriate, and that we approve Resolution 116-2017, and to allow construction of the self-storage project, and that we adopt the supporting evidence for the reduction in parking, and to allow for a 22% reduction of the required parking.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. And I have a, okay, I have a motion by Budge, a second by McGarvey. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Aye.
Councilmember McGarvey?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Okay, with that, we will move on to our regular calendar. And our first item is Item 12.1, Introduction and First Reading of Ordinance 9-2017, adding for our Property Maintenance Code. So we're back at it again. And I'm being told this is, even though this is on a regular calendar item, this is just for information only, right?
No, sir. This is for consideration and action.
Okay. My notes look a little different on here, but go ahead. That's why I wanted to ask. That's why I wanted to ask.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Carrie Simpson, Neighborhood Services Manager with Ryan Taylor, Neighborhood Services Supervisor. We're here to bring forth a proposed property maintenance code with a few changes that clarify some of council's concerns. In addition, I would like to clarify for people who may be here tonight or watching at home that the ordinance is written in such a way that it sets forth how a property should not be maintained. I know it gets a little confusing because we're sort of talking in the negative, but it would be very difficult to write the extensive amount of language to cover everything that we would like to see out there. Prior to actually getting into the, into the code, I would just like to say that in preparing for tonight, we found one section that we would like to make a recommendation to update before we actually get into the, to the ordinance. We would like to recommend that Section 16181703R read, "Parking of any vehicle not in accordance In order to get the best regulations as it relates to parking, we feel it's just better to refer right back to the zoning code section. Should there be any changes, they'll work together, they'll work in unison, we won't need to change one and change another.
And Mayor and Council, I would just add that there has been some discussion that there may be further changes that are necessary to some of the language you have in your code relating to parking that would be coming before the council shortly. So rather than attempting to summarize those regulations in just a few words in this, we thought it best to just make one cross-reference to a larger section, so that when we come back to you with updates to that parking, that whole parking issue, and you give your policy direction, we can easily update it. We may possibly simplify it in this section at that time, once we get that additional update and new policy direction from the council.
Thank you, Adam. So going through this, I'm going to try and be very brief, because I know you've seen pieces of this. We have our municipal code talking about property maintenance for both commercial and residential in many, many areas of the code. And it gets confusing for staff, it gets confusing for residents and business owners. So we want to have one location where it's easy and clean for folks to find the standards that we ask them to maintain their property. We need it for the easy reference. We'd like to provide clear enforcement standards. And as I had mentioned in the past, we have some issues with things being purely located in the zoning code. Sometimes we use the lien process to gain compliance when a person refuses to abate a nuisance. We're unable to lien for zoning code violations. Therefore, if someone wanted to park in the middle of their lawn, even after much education and outreach, we are able to use liens as a way to abate the behavior. Putting some zoning code standards in this property maintenance code resolves that issue. So again, it'll apply to commercial and residential. There'll be education and outreach and time for people to comply. We do provide resources for folks who need help in gaining compliance if they're unable to do it themselves. Violations can be appealed, and fines and liens could be imposed after we've worked with residents and business owners. We've done much outreach to both the community, the Chamber of Commerce, City Council, and we've had a lot of input from everybody. So some of the clarifications specifies that the length of glass not to exceed eight inches, the five-foot separation from edge of the driveway to the property line, so that we don't have the massive concrete that we see in some of the newer areas. We did clarify materials for fencing. So we are saying redwood, cedar, pine, Douglas fir, vinyl, wrought iron. And there is a caveat that allows the new Community Development Director to look at some other types should we come across them and make a determination whether they're Verbiage to talk about UL-listed outdoor landscaping, lighting, and temporary holiday lighting. We don't want to see the kind of lights that get put up, you know, during the holidays, and two years later, they're hanging and they don't work. That's what we're looking to resolve. We clarified what we don't want to see with regards to things stored on a property. Please ignore this, this section. As I mentioned, we'd like to just refer the section back to parking of a vehicle not in accordance with the zone, the appropriate zoning code section, as I read at the beginning of the presentation. This talks about property maintenance for commercial property. We're asking people to remove trash from businesses, making sure that their frontages are free of liquids and excessive gum, that should they be repaving their parking lot, they do it to the American Society for Testing and Material Standards. We don't want them re-striping a parking lot only to find out that you can't even see where the handicap is six months later, because it's not durable. We want to see the prohibition of some additional items, furniture, household fixtures, et cetera, as listed here. And we clarified this section, the maintenance or keeping of any non-operative mechanism or approved keypad that provides access to and from an apartment complex or multifamily dwelling unit. And there was a redundant piece on the end of the sentence, and we removed that. So I think our city attorney, Adam, I believe you had one comment you'd like to make real quickly.
Thank you. In reviewing the items, we got a question from, and a comment from one council member offline that we appreciate very much from their outreach in the community. And just wanted to clarify that the property maintenance code does not change any legal non-conforming land uses to illegal uses. The property maintenance code is, is really about property maintenance and the standards for property maintenance. So there's sections in the municipal code, 23170, that deal with the circumstances under which you can maintain or do different things with respect to the actual land use of itself. And again, this code does consolidate the maintenance standards from many places in the code, and in some cases, add some additional maintenance standards, but it doesn't concern itself specifically with the issue of non-conforming land uses or structures.
Thank you, Adam. So at this time, I will entertain any questions.
On Title VI, on that first one, current municipal codes about graffiti, and there's also mention in 9.5 of graffiti also. I'm assuming that graffiti in property of a resident would be one thing. And business, if there is a business who has had the lease, it's the property owner, building owner, who has to paint over the graffiti and like that. The county used to have, I don't think they do anymore, maybe they do, but there's a truck that went around, and it could match any paint that was on the building. So you wouldn't have a brown wall here with gray patches on it. Same thing on a, on a home. And that can be kind of expensive. And some of the homes that have retired people in it, it's going to be almost impossible for them to get the money to start matching that. So what are we doing with that? Are we going to have businesses responsible only and residents not? Does the city have some money to follow that like the county did, or what?
So actually, that's a great question, Councilmember McGarvey. When we do come across residents that have an issue, we do talk to them about painting it out pretty quickly. The quicker you paint it out, the less likely you are to get re-graffiti on your property. But we also do work with volunteer groups and find ways to help, creative ways to help people paint out their graffiti, because we know it does become a burden to them. So that's something that we actually work with, with Loriann and some of the volunteer groups on. But we've had very good success in not overburdening residents on that, because it is an issue.
Good. Because I was worried about that.
Yeah.
And then as far as the businesses are concerned, it's the property owner that's responsible for that, not the people who are leasing it, correct?
Correct. A lot of them do have arrangements with their property owner that they'll do it, but those folks are pretty quick about responding. Many of them keep paint on-site and will go out and have the correct paint ready and waiting to go to paint it out. But we're having a second hearing also, we've had a second reading also of our graffiti abatement ordinance, which we brought forth last time tonight. And we are asking to make sure that if, when people do paint it out, that they match it. But yes, the property owner is ultimately responsible.
Okay. That's, I was kind of concerned about, because I know it's sometimes when you are trying to paint over and you don't have a match, and you just put something on it, it doesn't look much better than what you're trying to cover.
You are correct. I have an employee that calls it plaid. Plaid.
Okay. But again, like I was concerned about the residents who need the help from the volunteers, Vins, and all the rest of the organizations we have. I know Loriann has a wonderful, does a wonderful job on getting those things done. But we have some retired citizens who need help, and I want to make sure they get it.
There's been an occasional employee that's come back with paint on their clothes after lunch, and I'm saying nothing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Do we have any comment cards on this item?
Yes, sir. Diane Rogers.
That's it? Just one?
Good evening, Council. Diane Rogers with the President and CEO of the Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce. I've actually got some very specific portions of the ordinance I'd like to address, and I don't know if it's, because it's the first reading, would be best to do it here, or perhaps meeting with staff offline, so whatever your direction would be with regard to that. My first concern, however, is that when we look at the ordinance, there's not an indication of what's been changed. I don't, I can't read it and know what's been changed from the April meeting to the June meeting to the, so it's very difficult to track what's, and I'm just hoping that overall, we could start having a policy that the changes could be indicated, so we know what was going on.
So, so the sections that we went over on the PowerPoint are the things that have been changed?
But inside the ordinance itself, it's a whole lot easier to track and tell what's been altered or changed. You know, like many legal documents will show what's been changed. Anyway, for your future consideration. I did want to let you know that while we certainly are supportive of the purpose or the intent, a number of our chamber members have expressed concern that they're being held responsible for actions by others that are beyond their control. Nothing here allows owners or managers or to direct code enforcement or other entities towards the actions of others and hold them perhaps accountable. Our hope that that might be taken into consideration. One example is we have a local business that was a Chamber Business of the Year that provided much-needed resources to Rancho Cordova. And unfortunately, and I quote, "It holds me accountable for the wrong actions of other people, and quite frankly, inspires me to leave Rancho Cordova and look for an alternative business location." And unfortunately, that's exactly what that business owner has done, and they've left.
Is there a specific instance within the, like, what's, what was?
What's the nature of what's going on?
Yeah, because, I mean, are we talking graffiti abatement?
One, the, one had to do with the carts, and the other had to do with trash issues. That, again, they tried and tried to do a variety of different things, follow the ordinances, but still, whether it's homeless or others, they're breaking into them and doing more and more damage, and they just basically threw up their hands and said, "I can't take it anymore."
And the city, and they're frustrated with the city's enforcement of the, of those rules? Or?
This business is feeling like they don't have an option, and I'm perfectly happy to take back a different view.
I really am curious what you're, what you're...
Right. That they don't have the ability to say, "It's not me, it's these folks. What can we do about these folks?" And the message they're getting back is, "It's your ultimate responsibility. You need to be responsible for it."
Okay.
So sometimes it just reaches a level of frustration. They've tried, and in their mind, and I don't know the exact details, but in their mind, they felt frustrated that they've tried to do as much as they could. The cost, for example, of the grocery carts, those are $200 to $300 apiece. And I know that that's a separate issue with regard to collecting them and things. But it is, but it is, couple other just quick things. I'm sorry?
Okay, but let's, I think we're all sensitive, I mean, I know we're all sensitive to anything that people feel like is burdensome. However, if you look at what's gone on at a certain pharmacy on a major corner that is close to my house, I've never been able to understand why they didn't get out in the morning and pick up the trash in the parking lot. And I agree that they didn't, they're not the ones who threw the trash in the parking lot, but it's their responsibility to get out and pick up the parking lot. So I'm like Donald, I'm having trouble figuring out what's egregious enough that would make somebody leave town. If you're talking about shopping carts, most of them have a service that they subscribe to that picks them up. We have a service that they can call. If you're talking about people who are camping overnight on your front doorstep, they can do trespass order with the police department. So just from the little I know about it, it would seem like they have options to get them some assistance, instead of just putting up with everything and then finally getting fed up.
Right. I don't necessarily disagree with you. The pictures, and I submitted them at another hearing that we had, had people actually sleeping in the, in the shopping carts in the back of their property. So that was sort of, and then even though they had put locks on, the people were prying up the locks and pushing up the edges of the trash cans to be able to reach in and get whatever materials. And this is a grocery store. So that's the way it was presented to me, is that they were just done. And that they, and the cost, and this grocery store paid minimum wage, didn't have a huge, I'm trying to remember what the word is, but the, their ratio...
They didn't have deep pockets.
They didn't have deep pockets. And so that that was, and that was a quote that they asked me to share. So from that stuff. Couple of the other points, if I...
Before we leave that section, Diane, I just wanted to clarify, all we do is refer to the shopping cart ordinance. There's no changes as it relates to shopping carts at all in this ordinance?
I recognize there's no changes to that. That was just one of, it's accumulation of things, I think, that they need to understand. There is one section, for example, that says vehicle parking areas should, shall be used only for parking operable vehicles of customers and visitors as appropriate. I'm wondering why, where the, the businesses' vehicles may park? Are they not allowed to park them?
That would be normal operating. Yeah.
No, it says operable vehicles of customers and visitors. It doesn't say of owners and of the people that actually run, are managed.
Good point. We could definitely clarify that. We're looking for folks not to bring their, their mother-in-law's broken-down car and leave it in there. That's what we're looking for.
Completely agree. And I do have three or four of these, and if it's more appropriate for Carrie and I to sit down and go through some of these, I'm happy to do so.
Well, and I think some of them, yeah, they are, because depending on the instances that you're talking about, and again, that, we don't need to name the business, but if there's a business that feels that they're being pointed out because other ones aren't doing it, if it's still a problem for them to deal with it, it's still a problem for them.
Right.
So, so it's not because another grocery store wasn't taken care of there, therefore we're looking at them closer. But I, but I think, you know, we've had some working groups around grocery carts and other things like that, that codes work. I know I've asked, I've asked Carrie on multiple times about actually ratcheting up our enforcement and how we deal with it. And maybe, maybe it's finally time to sit down with the grocers and come up with a timeframe at which everyone's got locks and other things like that. And I, and I get that there are probably instances that become difficult, but again, if we set the standard where everyone needs to meet it, if you're frustrated about the standard, I mean, it's still, it's still a standard.
Agreed. And this, in this particular instance, no one pointed out that somebody else was being treated differently, or this was an overwhelming, "I'm, I'm done" sort of frustration. So...
So, okay, so in terms of process, we need to ask for Adam's guidance, because as he pointed out in June when we heard this, because it is a first reading, what we read, what we acknowledge as being read tonight, needs to be correct to, with the language that we want it to include. So, do we need to continue this again?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
I think, I think we should allow her to continue and give her, give us your, the full list. Then I think we need to reflect on that for a moment. There may be some of the changes that we could make immediately and do here tonight. There may be certain changes, as Ms. Simpson described, that really just restate what's in the code right now. So where we're not actually changing the city's laws at all, we're just, we're just restating them in a different place. And there, perhaps, there would be a longer effort of working with staff and council to bring that issue back to council, to decide whether or not you want to update anything about either your enforcement protocols or the ordinance at a later date. But even though we're restating it here, we're not necess, we're not actually changing the substance of the law. So, so what I think we should do is just keep listening and then, and then give you our suggestion. We have already continued the item a couple of times before. We've been working on the item for, for quite some time.
Yeah, I wouldn't think we would need to continue, but what might, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Lynda, you and David sat on a subcommittee that were... Linda, you and David sat on a subcommittee that reviewed a lot of these items. So maybe the opportunity would be for some members of the chamber to meet with staff and the subcommittee to talk through a few of the issues that you might see that are popping up that we can, that we can work on. Because I think, I think it, it has less to do with what we adopt, it's how we carry it out from an enforcement standpoint. And I think sometimes, some of us up here talk about how we'd like to see things, and that turns into, "We want more tickets, or we want more of that." That's not necessarily the most effective way to do it, and so maybe in working with the chamber and staff, we can come up with, with how we handle the enforcement side of these things.
And I would appreciate the opportunity, and again, but I, I didn't want to spend the whole time up here going through every little tiny thing. I didn't think that would be a particularly effective use. So I'll just go, a couple of other things that I did want to just bring to everyone's attention. No hearing shall be held unless the full fine, or the fine has been deposited in advance. I think from a business standpoint, requesting that the full fine be deposited might be an unreasonable request. Then courts and things, often it's, there's a certain percentage of it, but asking for the full fine, I think, can be burdensome, and I'd ask that you consider that. And this is my political statement, the administrative citation and any additional reports submitted by the enforcement officer shall constitute prima facie evidence. And I realize that that may be common practice, but anytime we assume guilt before innocence, that concerns me. And then the other final one was failure to receive notice. The failure of a person to receive a required notice shall not affect the validity of any proceedings taken under this section. I have no issue with the section as long as there's demonstration that significant efforts were made to contact the person and that has been recorded. And I think there's room for that, but it just concerns me when the burden seems to be on one side, so.
Well, and, and that one is important, 'cause you don't want to deprive anybody of due process.
Right, exactly. And then, I know that this is a fun one. Regarding chain-linked fence, just a gentle reminder that we have one of the largest producers of chain-linked fence around, and they are a reputable business in that perhaps there might be some room for chain-linking regarding business, or slats put in it that are vinyl, or something like that, that just, I know, I'm not gonna get that.
But there's obviously an appropriate place for chain-link.
Right, right.
It's just not in front yards.
I'd agree, in residence, wholeheartedly agree. This happened to be under the business section, so I just wanted to do that. So I guess.
That's helpful to know, though, 'cause I don't think I've heard that before, so, thank you.
Yeah, Crusader Fence, yeah, one of the largest ones. So, who actually refuses to be a member of the chamber because of this ordinance? So, just a side note. And then finally, a consideration to developing some overall city policies that can, as a major statement, show that we are, are business-friendly. And I think that we do that, I just was hoping that, I just would like to codify it a little bit more and just be able to help articulate that.
So I can speak to that one, because that was one of the things that David and I wanted to put into some sections of the zoning code. And because of the way in which we only reviewed a portion of the zoning code six months ago, or whatever that was, we didn't get to complete that process. But we wanted to point out that a significant number of the sections within the zoning code are important to growing the economy in our community. And so David and I will continue to work on that as we go on with things like signage and landscaping and things that help a business advertise where they're, that they're here, that kind of thing.
Perfect, I appreciate that. And that basically summarizes what my points were.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And I, I really look forward to working with you on, especially on shopping carts. That is a section that we want to review, and I, we get a lot of complaints from residents. The city spends thousands of dollars picking up carts also, so I'd love to work with you and your members, Diane, 'cause it's, it's a tough one.
And businesses do too, so it's, that's.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. So with that, any other questions for staff? That was our only public comment card, correct? Okay. Do you have a motion?
So there's no need to change any language? Oh, what about the employee parking?
Yeah. That seemed like one that we could take just.
And employee parking. Is that a motion?
Just, can we just get to the right section, and before we add the language?
It's 16181704Q. So. So maybe we could just, just add in, "Vehicles parking areas shall be used only for parking operable vehicles of..." Let me think about this. So it's customers and visitors as appropriate. And employees. And employees, yes, yes. Employees, comma, customers and visitors as appropriate.
Or owners.
Or owners.
Owners, employees.
Owners, comma, employees. Yeah, go ahead.
Denise Bazano from the City Attorney's Office. Good evening, Councilmember Mayor. I would just say that the prohibited action is actually the maintenance of, or keeping of vehicle parking areas with garbage and debris and damage to asphalt, concrete surface, landscape areas, curbing, period. So that we don't really have to add positive language. I think the, the sentence that follows, which is vehicle parking areas shall be used only for parking operable vehicles of customers and visitors as appropriate, was just so that people would, would find that language helpful in understanding the prohibit, prohibition. So we can add. Owners and employees, but then you have to open up to all sorts of other vehicles that may be on the parking area.
Okay, so turn that question over. If, for instance, we delete that sentence, then does that give one of our very large retailers the permission to let people advertise their recreational vehicles for sale on the front of their lot? As is done in some places?
Well, that, if you add that language, then it wouldn't be a prohibited action. Does that make sense? So, "Vehicle parking areas shall be used for, only for parking operable vehicles of customers and visitors as appropriate." If you added a, an additional, you know, like are vehicles related to the business, that would allow for the activity that you're talking about, but it would probably violate other ordinances. Does that make sense?
So Linda, you're concerned about, you're, you're concerned about commercial vehicles like a U-Haul parked in front of?
Well, I mean, of course, that's another, that's another whole thing.
Okay, I thought that's what you're getting at.
But, but no, no, you're absolutely right. That's another thing that we do not allow. And, but, no, we, it's been some time since this has been an issue, but we have a significant retailer around here who is well-known for allowing people to park RVs and automobiles for sale on the front of their lot, and in some places they do it routinely, and we don't want that.
Well, there is the last sentence, which says, "All parking standards shall be maintained in conformance with Chapter 23.719", which is the zoning code parking standard. So if, if that type of parking doesn't conform to the zoning code, that would be a different issue.
So it sounds like this is another sentence, you, you might just delete that sentence and leave in the one that says it has to conform to the zoning code.
That, that would be the possible suggestion, that I think, consider just deleting the second sentence altogether.
Yes, that would be acceptable.
So. So again, to the, to the speaker.
Well, you can't. We're talking about everybody else.
What was intended here was, what was intended here was to regulate and prevent parking lots that have garbage and debris and, and damaged surfaces, not to limit the users of those parking lots.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think we got in the weeds with it. I think we just delete that section, and then it would go back to the zoning code, which means you cannot have a non-operable vehicle, right?
So then, Mayor, if you would like to go back to calling for a motion, you would, the potential motion that you would call would be to move the staff recommendation to waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance as proposed with the one amendment that staff previously read into the record regarding parking and the citation, and second, the deletion of this section that you've just been discussing here.
Do you have a motion?
So we move that recommendation.
Have a motion, do you have a second?
As he stated it.
So a motion by Budge, a second by Gatewood. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember McGarty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And again, thank you to all the staff members, including Ms. Bazano and Carrie Simpson and Mr. Taylor and their staff who worked on this for a long, long time. We, we, again, we hope that in the long run to the community, this makes understanding Rancho Cordova's code enforcement efforts much easier and, and efficient.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, yeah. So with that, we'll move on to item 12.2, discussion, discuss establishment of a Measure H Community Enhancement Fund Oversight Board. Good evening, ladies.
Good evening.
Good evening. Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, I'm Kim Duran-Carragio, the Administrative Services Director, and with me here tonight is Stacey Delaney, Community Enhancement Analyst. We are here this evening to discuss with you the potential establishment of a Community Enhancement Fund Oversight Board. When the Measure H Sales Tax Measure was approved in 2014, City Council expressed interest in establishing an oversight board that would review the manner in which community enhancement fund dollars were spent. While not required by the voter-approved tax measure, an oversight board would provide an additional layer of transparency to the community. Based on feedback received from the City Council on this topic during the most recent budget development process, it is anticipated that if established, an oversight board would serve in an audit function in reviewing how community enhancement fund dollars are spent. The board would not be tasked with determining the actual award of community enhancement fund dollars. Staff is here this evening to seek additional direction from the City Council on the timing and parameters for the establishment of a Community Enhancement Fund Oversight Board. There are five key areas which staff is seeking City Council guidance in regards to the formation of the board, which are summarized on Page 2 of the staff report with some basic staff suggestions. These five areas are, one, the size of the board. Staff recommendation is that this board would be somewhere between five to nine members to allow a reasonable number of interested citizens to participate. Second area is eligibility. Staff recommendation is that it would be a Rancho Cordova resident over the age of 18 and not the direct recipient of any community enhancement fund dollars. The next, number three would be the criteria used for selection. The staff recommendation is that a brief application process be developed to allow for all interested community members to apply, with final appointment being made by the City Council. The fourth area would be term limits or term lengths, and the recommendation there is that board members be appointed to serve for varying terms between two to four years to ensure continuity during times of transition. And then finally, the last area is roles and responsibilities, and what the oversight board would be tasked with. There are sort of three areas that staff has suggested could be options. One being, this oversight board could review the accomplishments achieved with community enhancement fund dollars for each fiscal year, which would be highlighted in the annual report. Another area was to confirm the amount of revenues and expenditures received and assure that they are spent in alignment with the budget. And finally, to review each community enhancement fund grantee's adherence to the city's reporting requirements. So those are the three areas that staff has suggested, but again, these are just staff suggestions, and we are here tonight to seek some further direction from the City Council.
Thank you. Do you have any comment cards on this item?
Yes, sir. Walter Myers.
Most of you know me, I'm, my name's Walt Myers, I live in Rancho. I, I in my lifetime have served on three oversight committees. It's a thankless job from the standpoint of mostly, first off, I don't know the difference between a oversight board and an oversight committee. A board, to me, is, is a different connotation than a committee. I don't know. Anyway, my, my, over, my sight or my feelings about an oversight committee is, they, they are either effective, or they're rubber-stamp for the governing board. You have to decide if you're gonna listen, you're gonna take an oversight committee or board, put them through the process of oversighting, you have to guarantee that you're going to listen to that thing, not predetermine how you're gonna... I, I, I don't know how to say this in the best words without getting... I'm sorry, I just, I, the, the main thing from what I read in the Thiel and what you stated now, you have to take some people and determine that they want to help you make the right decisions. Not that they want to back you up, not that they want to agree with you. They've got to have some independence to where they can come at you and say, "You are wrong. We do not feel like you should spend this money there." It's not a slush fund for the board, in my estimation. It's a enhancement fund to be judiciously used. And if, if somebody can tell me the difference between a board and a committee, I'd, I'd really appreciate it.
I think it's really semantics. It's semantics, it, I don't think.
Here's semantics?
No, semantics. It's, it depends on what somebody defines as a board and what somebody wants to call a committee. It really is in the teeth of what we decide to, to charge the committee or board with. So you can call it a commission, you can call it a committee, you can call it a board. It, it really has to do with what the governing documents are that we.
And you're saying semantics?
Yeah.
Fine.
I mean, but again, I, I, I think, I appreciate your comments. I, we've discussed this over the last couple of years since Measure H passed, what kind of role we wanted this committee, commission, or board to, to have. And I think that's more of what you should probably pay attention to in the conversation than just what we're gonna call it, is what we actually do with it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I don't know if anybody else wanted to weigh in, but to me, I, I think, I think less of what we call it is what we ultimately tell them to, to work on, is the important part. And so with that, was that our only comment card? Okay. Questions for staff? Any comments on process or how we want, we want to move forward?
I would like to see, I broke it. Hold on, just go. There you go. I would like to see, I would like to see something along the lines where each councilman designates one person for the group, and he serves the term as same as the councilman, so when we leave, they leave, so we can keep the fresh blood coming in and out, and something along those lines.
So that's talking about the size of it?
Yeah, so five people, and then it's also a great way to start a bench. So we can have people that get used to the process, and that care about the city and want to be involved. Because I know a lot of, a lot of individuals here in Rancho Cordova need a place and want to be able to get themselves back involved with the city.
I, I'm thinking more along the line of seven to nine people on it.
Two.
Because I've been on CORPAK, and we had a much better ability to look at the, what the county presented to us. And it'd be the same thing as the, what the Measure H money is being, going to be used. The oversight committee can look at it, and you would have, rather than just having, well, you could have five different opinions because you have five members of the council. If you have more than that, then you may have a majority vote on it in what they think is right or wrong, or something like that. I think it would be better than having just five.
Yeah, I, I would tend to agree, a board probably closer to nine, only because these committees can, it sometimes be tough to get a quorum. And if you're relying on, you know, if three people can't make it, you can't meet, makes it very. Yeah, I, I would tend to agree. A Board, probably closer to nine, only because these committees can, it sometimes be tough to get a quorum, and if you're relying on, you know, if three people can't make it, you can't meet, makes it very difficult, and unlike what we all agreed to when we ran for office or got appointed, we knew what we were getting ourselves into, these may only meet two, three times a year, and that may not fit with somebody's vacation schedule or other things like that, and so I would think some way of coming up with, obviously, you want an odd number, so we're going to have to figure out a way to do that, and off the top of my head, I can't think of that, but we all get two, except one of us, or something like that, to get to nine, at some rate like that, to, to start. I like the idea here that you said about that their terms end if the council member that appointed them's term ends in some way. So I like that idea, but I would also like some sort of mechanism for the council member that appointed them to remove them before the end of their term. I think that that's something that I've, and I've only heard this, so I wasn't here, but I've heard that with some of our prior commissions, that, that some council members wished that they had had that power, and we may have still had a planning commission or some other things. So some mechanism there, it should be rare, you know, maybe it takes the council member that appointed them to do that, along with two other council members, to, to take an action. Something that, but there are times that these things can kind of get out of hand, I guess, or an individual can. Selection criteria, I think, I like the idea of residents. I would honestly like to reserve at least one position for a youth, so somebody over the age of 15, let's say, but a lot of what we fund is youth-oriented, and as somebody who served on the school board, remember, on the school board, we, it was a, it was a, what I'm looking for, they did not, they, they, we had student trustees always at, on the school board, they didn't, their vote didn't necessarily, I'm trying to remember how we counted their vote, but it was advisory in nature, but I'd actually like them to be able to vote, because a lot of what we fund is youth-oriented and education-oriented, so maybe that's how we get the one extra somehow. Maybe we do it with, we each pick two, and then there's one student that's picked among the three superintendents, or something like that.
Yeah, a couple of business owners, some youths, and some business officials.
You want to know?
So-
And, and so, when we get into the industry side of it, I think in looking at what our first selections are, we can see if we're slanted one way or the other, because if we're all going to be open to who we want to suggest, to put the parameters up front, that somebody's got to figure out who the business one is, I think is, but if we, if we look at that first makeup of the Board, if it's not representing what we want, I think we can discuss it there, but to do that up front, and it's like, oh, well, I've got my business person, well, I've got one too, and so I wouldn't want to curtail that too much. Okay, I don't know if there are other comments. I want to get to the roles and responsibilities up here.
Yeah, I didn't get to comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right, you didn't. Please.
So, from my perspective, five to seven is plenty. We don't want to get so many people that you have such a wide variety of opinions that nobody agrees. I appreciate the scope of work that has been suggested, or the tasks that have been suggested. In terms of appointment, I love the idea of having a student member, and so we could use a process similar to what we used with the Planning Commission, where each one of us, we would have a, a basic application procedure, so that's how we would get the applicants, but then each one of us would select one of the applicants, and then we would ask the superintendents for a nomination for a student member, and if they didn't have a student nominee, that's fine, but, you know, in case they do, or we could, yeah. And then one other person who would be agreed upon by all five of us, which is basically what we did with the Planning Commission, we had two applicants at large, one of whom had to be a Rancho Cordova resident, one of whom didn't necessarily have to be a Rancho Cordova resident, just had to live within the Planning Advisory Council area.
So in this case, you would have one of those, and then you'd have the, the student?
Exactly. I disagree that we should target the various people, the various positions on the Board. That's a very difficult thing to do. That usually works when you have things like architecture review committees, or design review committees, and you're looking for a specific group of professionals. And frankly, having watched the Planning Commission, I would suggest that we only appoint for two years. As Walt says, anybody who sat, I know that a significant number of people who sat on the various, what were called Oversight Committees or Boards for the school district, got really burned out after, after a couple of years, and exactly as he articulated, a lot of people felt that their opinions were not being listened to, and nobody cared, that the decisions were made long before. So it may very well be that people are willing to give it a two-year commitment, and they like the flexibility to not be, to not necessarily have to be reappointed, but we should have the ability to reappoint if the person that we have nominated wants to be reappointed. It might be a good idea to have the student member change once a year.
I was going to suggest that, too.
Isn't that the way to do it at school districts?
Well, the school district doesn't, what I was, what I was going to suggest is, considering we have three school districts, to actually rotate it in some way, so that it's not always-
Lovely idea.
So maybe it's Sac City one year, it's Elk Grove one year, considering Falls Cordova's the larger, maybe it's, you know, it's one-year Falls Cordova, one-year Elk Grove, one-year Falls Cordova, one-year Sac City, something like that, to where you do it, but you, but you start to get representation in some way.
Please, let's not do things like LAFCO and regional transit and that kind of thing, all right?
I just want, I just want to make sure, when, when you look at like our city, if you look at like our youth at City Hall, or other things like that, well, hang on, hang on. The reason that I say that is, the vast majority of students that we end up recruiting for things come from Falls Cordova.
Which is exactly, and a significant number of the projects that we have funded are in Folsom, Cordova, which is a good reason to start off with them, simply because they're more familiar with the project, they're more familiar with the Community Enhancement Fund, so-
I wouldn't disagree with that.
So those would be my, those would be my comments.
Can we grab someone from the, oh, can we grab-
Sir, we've already had public comment. Thank you.
Can we grab someone from the college? Maybe one of the people that were putting through the junior college, one of the programs that were helping out, and have one of them be on this council?
I'll promise.
That's interesting, because I did know a couple of the kids who were there, and I know them to be incredibly active at Cordo, one at, one at Cordova High, but, no, that, no, you know why that doesn't make sense? Because they're graduating. Okay, and what Donald is looking for is somebody who is younger-
Can I give you a, a different idea, that incorporates both of your ideas? If we lose the other member at large, you'd have one Promise student, one high school student. Could you do that? Then we'd get to seven.
Okay, but would the Promise student fulfill the role that you're trying to describe in having somebody who's younger, who's, who's taking advantage?
No, I'm saying both of them, so you would have, those would be the other two, so you, we each pick five, you have one Promise student. The only question that I run into is, you have a rule that says no one that's receiving funding can be that count?
Oh, that's a good point. It's totally contrary to that. So that, that is a-
At some, at some point, I do want to make a point about that.
Go ahead. Because I do like the idea, but they are getting funding.
Yeah.
Then, and not just to the organization that they represent, to them. So I don't know if-
Personally.
I just, to make the, the, at least raise the ethics question, when it comes time for us to write this up, I think you may want to also say that the ethics prohibition is forward as well as backwards, because you wouldn't want someone to get on the Commission, for example, be very, very critical of a prior decision, or the prior handling of a particular grant, knowing that it might have some influence on your choices or your ability to make choices in the future.
Future, yeah.
So you might have a, like a, a 12-month ban going forward, as opposed to just the looking backward.
So, so when, just so I understand, in, in that scenario, let's say, a student from Cordova High, or some other high school that lives in Rancho Cordova, if they were on this Committee, they wouldn't be able to apply for the Promise Program? Would that be the repercussion of serving?
Good point.
That's what I heard from you.
Yeah.
My point, my point was, I think, certainly broader than just the, the youth representative. You could certainly, you know, you could create, possibly create an exception, because, or we could at least think about whether or not for the youth representative, there would be some, some exception on, on the prohibition, because, you know, on, on, on one hand, you could see a situation where someone who was already provided, given a funding decision for you to support their education, and it is a one-time decision, all of their potential to influence a future decision has been exhausted. There's no, there's no opportunity for them to influence any future decision at the time that they're appointed to the post.
Well, I, I mean, and the way it's structured now, let's say you put a Promise student on this year, right, from, from the class that's in there, our commitment's only for one year. Unless we change the rule, they're not getting funding next year, so they're not necessarily going to influence that, but, so, but, and again, when we get to the purpose and the roles and responsibility, to me, more of the role that I see of this Committee or Board, or whatever you're going to call it, is looking back, not looking forward. So to me, it's almost, the high school student has more of a risk, because what if they're advocating in some way for the program, and then they are eligible for it? But I'd, I'd want to come up with some sort of exemption, I think, for youth around that one issue. I think the bigger concern is, you know, there shouldn't be nonprofit staff, or certain people like that, that would personally benefit beyond a scholarship or something to help them with college. So that's where I think the arms, and I, and I agree with what the staff report warns at, about that, but we do need to make sure that the language is right. But to me, if we each appointed one, and then, I don't know, we could hold an election among Promise students, or something like that, and then, I think between the, the three superintendents and school boards, they would find somebody that, that fit. But I can tell you that during my time on the school board, some of the most valuable input that I ever got as a school board member, or that was shared at a school board meeting, came from the student, and so I think there's huge upside to being able to do that, but that would get us to seven, if we took one Promise student the year that they're in, and then one student representative that would rotate among the, the three school districts. Technically, we have San Juan, right, but just that little bit.
It's also very consistent with the, the demographics of the people who showed up at all the community meetings right at the beginning. We had a significant number of students-
Tons.
Who, who came to those meetings and expressed opinions about what they would like to see in Rancho Cordova, and we certainly encourage them to do that.
Yep. Bob, did you-
Yeah, the, something that, I know when, before it became a city, but we were paying very high attention to the Board members, the Folsom, Cordova Unified School District. One of the years, they had the student there was from Kenny High School, and he was probably one of the most well-attended council members for the school board that you could find, and people were always wondering, said, "For Kenny High School?" I said, "Yeah, but you have some really smart kids there." So, you know, you have to look at all of the high schools and all that. Something else that Walt Little, Walt Myers, excuse me, said was he, the Committee wants to make sure that their opinion means something, and that's important. We don't want to have people who are going to be, they don't realize unless they look at what the, everything they're getting into. I mean, when we made a decision, then we had 60, more or less, opinions and things, that money went out to that much, that many number of people, and they'll be looking at those also. If they're going to work on that Oversight, then they're going to be looking at the same things we are, and it'll take some time. That's something that should be in that language when they're looking at it, whether they want to even be on the Committee or not.
Yeah. Well, and I, and I think that's the important thing about what was written here by the staff report, because to me, this is exactly in line with what I was thinking this Committee was going to be, which is a, not a forward-looking Committee, but a verification Committee. You're looking at how much money was coming in, how close did staff get, get it right as far as income, how, how was, how, how did the audit look? How were we spending these funds? Were they, were the grantees meeting the goals? So, so reviewing us and giving us report cards, basically, on what happened with the funds that we decided, not recommending or weeding through current year or future year applications.
No, it is like an audit committee.
Right. Right, and to, and to me, again, that's an Oversight Committee, not, not a Planning Commission, that you go to them first to see if they can approve you, or weed you down before it comes to us. That's not what this is. And again, that's, you know, I, I think you referenced the, the school board Oversight Committee, or the, the bond Oversight Committees. We had the same problems at Sac City, where you had people go in there that, you know, they thought they had the opportunity to change the projects and to spend the money in different ways. That is not what this Committee does. This Committee would be looking, and again, this is my interpretation, or my goal out of this, is to be looking at how well we spent the money, and how well did we utilize all of the money, and how good were we at figuring out how much we had year over year, and to make sure that we don't leave a bunch of money on the table.
Exactly.
That's really what this is, and that's what most bond Oversight Committees are, which is why it can get frustrating, is you want to go in there and rally for your, your cause and the things that are important, and you get to do that in a certain extent by showing who was most successful with their grant, and helps us understand who should get a grant the next year. But one of the strange things about these funds is, we said you need to have exit strategies for most of them, so we don't necessarily, you know, the Promise Program is probably always going to cost about what it costs unless they raise tuition. That may be something that we continue to do every year, but a lot of them, we said, you know, "We want to fund you, then we want you to figure out how to live without our funding pretty soon," and so the value here is more in looking at, at, at the audit and making sure that we're, that we're spending it, and that we're getting our revenue projections as accurate as possible. So I don't know if anybody else wants to comment on it, but I mean, this, this is a very specific set of duties and guidelines, and so as we think, as council members, who we want to appoint to this, explaining to them what they're going to do, and probably more importantly, to, to the, the public's comment, what they're not going to do, which is recommending, like, funding, that's not going to be part of their job. And I think if people understand what they're getting themselves into, and we don't oversell it to them, hopefully, we'll have a better, better experience.
Mayor, one potential way to harmonize the comments you just made with comments previously by Councilmember Budge with respect to the term and role, might be to identify this as a Committee with a particular number of years. So this becomes the Measure H Oversight Committee 2000 and blank to 2000 and blank. Then that Committee ends completely at the end of the term. You decide whether it be two years or four years, and at the end of that process, folks have the opportunity, they're no longer, they're no longer seated, the Committee itself is actually done. Then you can reapply and participate again in the process, and the council goes through the exact same process it did before. So it's truly kind of a, a fixed duration automatically, rather than a, rather than a term. The Committee itself completely dissolves and reforms.
We could do that every year, and I think one thing that I think would be, help put the students that we would appoint on even playing field, is you don't have, the adults are there every year, and I'm the new one every year, because I can tell you, having been in student government, being the student that's there for one year on a five-year Committee that everyone else knows what they're doing, and I spent six months learning it, that might be a really effective way to do, is just do one-year terms for all appointees, because you're going to change out the students. There's no way the students are going to do two years in a row. I mean, we even structured the, the high school student wouldn't be, for sure.
My only concern about that, I'm just thinking about the number of Community Enhancement Fund applications that we get, even though the number has come down, the number of applications that staff has to review before they make the first cut to winnow out the, the ones that are not ready for primetime, and, and the process that it takes to advertise for an appointment, and get the applications in and review them too, it's kind of labor-intensive, just like the applications for the fund itself. So-
You're saying Stacy needs an assistant?
No, no, I'm wondering, I'm, no, I'm just wondering how, if it's only a one-year Committee, 2000, you know, fiscal year 2017 to 18, or 18 to 19- committee, 2000, you know, fiscal year, 2017 to 18 or 18 to 19, does the, does the process really have, do we really have time to insert another process into what's already a very time crunch kind of a process?
My recommendation would be a two-year term strictly because I think it's going to take a few months for people to get up to speed. And I think if you had to go through the process every year, it could become labor-intensive, but that's just my feedback.
And just a quick reminder, this is a open and public meeting subject to the Brown Act, so there's a little bit of education about process to be, to be provided to folks.
Right.
So two years would, would run with our budget cycle.
Yeah.
So we would ramp up and then, well, we just passed our budget, so we could say that the terms we're going to end in conjunction with the next budget. So we would do new appointments. So the first one would be a little bit shorter.
Yeah.
Because I can't imagine we'd even panel anybody before the beginning of next year if we did this fall, from, you know, solicit applications and then make appointments and that would take a while.
Speaks to my point about the process.
Okay. Any other comments for staff? Is this an actual action item? Or is it just direction?
Direction, and then staff will return at a future meeting date with a resolution that will solidify what's being discussed this evening.
Estimate a timeline for that? Because I just, the, the reason I ask is there have been a handful of folks, based on this criteria, that wouldn't be eligible to be on it, that have been asking for this. So I, I'd like to have a, a date certain that we're going to be voting on this and getting started.
Are we talking about one month, two months, three months?
Three months.
Whatever you would need.
Thinking, uh, first meeting in October, I'm looking at our city attorney, I'll need their assistance and drafting everything. I'm not sure if that's a reasonable date.
And this will be something that will come back on consent. You've got the, the direction that you need. So this is adopting governing docs and that kind of stuff. Okay.
Yes, I, I think October certainly, um, there are, there are only a couple bells and whistles in what you just talked about.
Let's say by the end of October would be great. And again, part, part of that is I had somebody email me today asking about the formation of a planning commission and other things that were brought up, um, during the appointment process for the new council member and I had to explain to them, you know, we're starting with this one, we have some other staffing changes that, that need to occur before we can tackle planning commission, but obviously we, we need this out of the way before we can start on that one.
We still have to have something for them to do.
I totally agree with you. I just, just, a lot of us mentioned the formation of new commissions that night and I'm starting to get those questions up. So one of those coming. And so if this one can get finished, then we can move on to the next one. Bob?
Yeah, um, Walt, you said you've only been on three. You want to be on four?
Based on what you've just heard?
I said, you said you've already been on three.
Bob wants to know if you want to be on this committee.
You want to be on four?
I would have to talk it over with an employee or a lawyer.
Got it. Bob will be available after this meeting. So, go ahead, go ahead.
Just a quick comment as to the, the form of the action here. I think our, our thinking was that you didn't want to put this in an ordinance because then it would make it too hard to update and change and, and learn from the work of the first committees. It's not, again, specifically required in, in the, the measure that went to the voters. And, but that you, you do want it in a resolution because that will help really be clear on the council's direction, I think particularly as to that roles and responsibilities discussion.
Yeah. And while it wasn't in the ballot language, we do know that there was a recess with an interest of adding that language. They chose not to, but we did make a commitment in, in public that we were going to do this at a, at a certain point. So, you know, I still think that, this is still fulfilling a promise that we made when we adopted the language that we did. So with that, you got what you need? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And so with that, we're going to call Stacy Lightner for item 12.3, right? I didn't miss anything else, right? And we're going to swear in our new city clerk.
Raise your right hand. Want to get closer? I state your name.
I, Stacy Lightner.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I take, bear true faith and allegiance.
That I bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Speech.
Congratulations, if you'd like to say anything?
Thank you.
That's it? Okay.
Yeah, I think we should have a little part if you mind.
Yeah, yeah. Stacy, come back up, let's take a quick picture. Okay, with that, we'll move on to item 13, uh, council request for future agenda items. Any hot topics? Nope. Okay, with that, we will stand adjourned. Oh, and we will be adjourned in the memory of Jared Tucker. Thank you.